Can I do it 2 a.m. or anything?
No.
No, I'm not doing 2 a.m.
You're doing what?
2 a.m.
2 a.m.
He thought we'd be till 2 a.m.
Six more, you can see. It's really a 17.
Yeah. It's just my own curiosity.
I'm sorry.
That's awesome.
I heard the mics around.
Six bells. Shot it in a soybean field.
Always come back to bite ya. Oh, I got time.
Yep.
We're ready. Six o'clock, 20 seconds after. Daryl, ready?
Yes, sir. Ready.
Guys?
Showtime.
I'd like to call to order the Board of Commissioners' meeting for October 18th, 2018. If we could face the flag, please, for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, take the roll, please.
Commissioner McConnell?
Here.
Commissioner Tomian?
Here.
Commissioner Hydeman?
Commissioner Dunn?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Vice Chair Bone, uh, Graytop.
Here.
Commissioner Bone?
All right. Additions, deletions, changes to the agenda. Commissioner Rushing?
I make a motion to add, make 3A into 11V and 11, or 3B into 11W.
Is that W or double V? Support. Okay. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Approval of the agenda, gentlemen?
Make a motion to approve the agenda with those changes.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Minutes of previous meetings.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve and file the minutes of our September 20th, 18 Commission Meeting and the October 4th, 2018 Standing Committee Meetings.
Support.
Motion to support discussion on the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I've got a couple of proclamations, A and B. They are going to be distributed, but we do need to get those approved. So if somebody wants to make a motion, if you have that.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve proclamations recognizing Andrea Sumro as a 2018 Veteran of the Year.
Support. Motion to support discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B?
6B, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the proclamation recognizing Bob Phillips' years of service for the city of Memphis.
Support.
Just if I could.
Motion to support discussion, Dave?
Yes, just slightly. I was previous township supervisor for Riley, and this individual lived in the city of Memphis, one of the places where I represent. And when I was supervisor, the volunteer firemen for the Memphis Fire Department were paid $10 a run. He served the city of Memphis and St. Clair County for 39 years, four months, as a volunteer fireman. It's quite a record of service for our community. And I will be presenting this to the fire chief and hopefully also at the city of Memphis Therpoe Board Meeting.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda, item 7.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the consent agenda. That contains the monthly budget to actual of September 2018, the contract for the elevator maintenance, the disposal of documents, the shredding, the environmental system institute contract, Veteran of the Year dinner and ceremony, letter of agreement with the P H P for our SAT prevention services for inmates.
All right. Have a motion. Support. End of support. Discussion? Anybody want to pull anything out of the consent agenda and talk about it?
I just wanted to ask, does this incur up the elevator contract? That's just two months, just so we can get an IRP out? Or we have one out and we're just waiting for results?
Yep. The renewal came in significantly higher, so we are going to bid it out. So we asked for that extension for two months, so we can bid it.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Reports of standing in special committees. Let's start down with Commissioner McConnell.
At the emergency management meeting, we have a retirement that's happening the end of October.
Julie Wallace?
Julie Wallace. And she is going to be, they're having a little cake and ice cream, I think, on the, and I don't know the date, 29th is a Sunday, so I think maybe it's the 30th.
You're right. Tuesday, the 30th.
So if anybody happens to be around wants to go out and have some delicious cake.
Okay. How long's she been with us? Anybody know?
I believe about 17 or 18 years.
Okay. Good. Anything else?
That's it. Thank you.
Commissioner Tomian?
I attended the SEMCOG General Assembly today from noon till 4:30. It was an interesting program about infrastructure, maintenance, and financing. And one of the other programs was about Parks and Recreation funding and planning. And our chair, Mr. Bone, was there to make a presentation on behalf of St. Clair County.
Is that for a Parks and Recs piece?
Yes.
Okay. Good. Anything else?
That'll be it.
Commissioner Tomian, anything about bicycle paths?
Uh, no. I'd like a motion to append training wheels to my bicycle.
We'll give them to you at your rib dinner.
You don't laugh at any of those guys, do you?
Don't laugh, it hurts, I know. Swinging over here, Commissioner Dunn?
Uh, one thing, Blue Water Community Action. They gave a presentation a few months ago about buying the old Baker College building. They have closed on that loan and the renovations, if not already started, they'll be getting resumes.
Very good. Are they in the building?
Not yet.
Okay.
I have nothing.
Nothing. Okay. I'll take a pass, other than go blue. New business, item 11A, approval of county disbursements?
Uh, you need citizens.
About citizens?
Oh. Excuse me. One, Mr. Jeremy Peruski would like to address the board. He's running for Congress in the 10th Congressional District.
Jeremy?
Here.
Right up there where we can hear you, please.
Thank you, everyone, for having me. My name is Jeremy Peruski. I'm running for U.S. Congress. I'm the first independent in over 50 years to actually make it on the ballot for our district. I'm running for Congress because of the fact that I don't believe that our community is being represented anymore in Washington, D.C. And I believe that we need to get our voice back for our community. I believe right now with the constant bickering that we see taking place every single day over whatever the tweet of the day may be isn't helping us move forward. It's not addressing the real issues that our community is facing every single day. And obviously, you guys are dealing with quite a bit of it. Speaking to some of the people here, obviously, they're dealing with it as well. But we need to get back to the real issues that we're grappling with as a community. And I aim to do that. And originally, a little bit of background, I'm originally from Deckerville, Michigan. I grew up on a dairy farm up there. Went to Michigan State. Go Green.
You're out of order.
And I've been doing business for the last 20 years. I've been, my background's in finance, and I've been a financial advisor for some of the largest tech companies in the world between the U.S. and China. And I've been doing that for almost, just over 20 years. So, but thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other citizens wishing to address the board? All right, we'll go to 11A now. Approval of county disbursements.
I would move to approve county disbursements for September 2018 in the amount of $45,640,972.22.
Support. Motion to support. Discussion?
Roll call.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomian?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Graytop?
Yes. Item B, 2018 budget adjustments.
This time, I'd like to move to approve the proposed budget adjustments to the 2018 general fund budget and special revenue fund budget.
Support. Okay, I have a motion to supports.
Pick out the one you want.
I got it.
You got it.
Okay. Discussion on the budget adjustments?
Is Danielle gonna get up and talk? Did you want to, Danielle, that you were here?
No. I didn't say that. I didn't put him up to it.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Tomian?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner, Vice Chairman Graytop?
Here.
Thanks. Put that right in front of me.
All right. Item C, Commission on Aging Appointment.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we appoint Julie Wallace to the Commission on Aging, representing District 5, for the remainder of a three-year term expiring December 31st, 2019.
Support.
Motion to support. Any discussion? This is the same Julie that's retiring from the emergency services, and she's going over to do something else. So those are the kind of people we like on our, working for our county. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item D is the contract approval request, Phillips Sign and Lighting.
This time, I'd like to move to approve the contract with Phillips Sign and Lighting Incorporated for the construction and installation of a sign at the Marine City Public Library in the amount of $30,180.22.
Support. I have a motion and support discussion. This is the one, there was roughly $25,000 given to the library by a donor, and then friends of the library made up the difference. And so I got two or three phone calls wanting to know if this was gonna pass tonight, so after the vote, I can call them back. Yep. Discussion?
Roll call.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomian?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Vice Chair Graytop?
Yes. Item E, Fiscal Year 2019 Residential Substance Abuse Treatment Grant Agreement.
I would move to approve the fiscal year 2019 Residential Substance Abuse Treatment Grant Agreement with the state of Michigan in the amount of $150,000.
Support. And motion to support, and there is a match, so we'll take a roll call vote, unless there's any discussion. All right. Roll call.
Commissioner Tomian?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Vice Chair Graytop?
Yes. Item F, Fiscal Year 2019 Traffic Enforcement Program Grant Application.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the fiscal year 2019 Traffic Enforcement Program Grant Application in the amount of $34,972.
Support.
Motion to support. Any discussion? This does not require a match, so I don't think we need a, just a roll call vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Let's go to G, Resolution 1819 Revising Animal Control Fee Schedule.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we adopt Resolution 1819, adopting a new fee schedule for dog license fees and remuneration of issuing and recording licenses.
Support.
Motion to support. Discussion? Roll call?
Resolution.
Roll call.
Commissioner Tomian?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Vice Chair Graytop?
Yes. Item H, Resolution 1821 Animal Control and Protection Ordinance.
I would move to adopt Resolution 18-21, amending the St. Clair County Animal Control and Protection Ordinance.
Support. Discussion? I think if you read through that, you've probably found that the only changes in there were to the title, director, with the exception of going to a three-year offer on licenses from a one to a three-year, if people opted for that, as long as they had their three-year rabies shot.
Okay.
The dog, not the people.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomian?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Graytop?
Yes. Let's go to I, 2019 to 2023 Capital Improvement Program.
I move to approve the 2019 through 2023 Capital Improvement Program as recommended by the St. Clair County Metropolitan Planning Commission.
Support.
I have motion to support. Any discussion on the capital improvement program as it's presented?
Just a little. For all these programs that potentially may happen, they still have to come to the full board for approval on each individual item. So it's just for the kind of a plan where we're gonna be going.
I mean, this is just in constant motion, correct?
Yes. Yep.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item J, Blue Ways of St. Clair Strategic Plan Grant.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the Coastal Zone Management Grant, Program Grant for the development of the Blue Ways of St. Clair Strategic Plan and Trail Towns Outreach in the amount of $45,008.
Support.
Motion and support. Any discussion? Part of what they're doing right now with this also is they're going to completely redo the website. It should be done maybe by December, from what I hear. And it's really getting some feet underneath it. This Blue Ways thing has really taken off well for this county. Roll call.
Commissioner Tomian?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Graytop?
Yes. Item K, Blue Way Strategic Plan.
Mr. Vice Chair, I move that we approve the cooperative agreement with the Land Information Access Association in an amount not to exceed $21,000. This is part of the same project.
Support. Discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomian?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Graytop?
Yes. We're gonna move on to L in a second, but this would probably be a good time to just mention to the audience that it may appear that we're moving through these things rather quickly. However, all of these things were discussed at length at our committee meetings two weeks ago, so just to let you know. Item L, Brownfield Redevelopment Authority Reappointments.
This time, I'd move to appoint John Cooper, District 2, and John Osborne, District 1, to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority Board of Directors, each for a three-year term expiring 10/31 of 2021.
Support.
I have a motion to support. It looks like we have a vacancy. Ian Lockwood has stepped down. That's District 5, which is mostly in Jeff's area, probably. So we'll have to get word to him that we've got an opening there. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item M, CMU Archaeology Field School at Light Station.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the proposal from Central Michigan University for an archaeological field school at the Fort Grashat Light Station in the amount of
Support.
Motion to support. Discussion, guys.
This one, if Bone was here, would he have to abstain from voting?
He would have to abstain from voting when he, whenever he voted about Harvard of the North, he has to. Do you need a roll on that one?
Is that their money or ours?
Is that their money or ours?
That's their money.
It's their money.
All right, roll call.
You're approving it, but we can roll call.
Never mind it.
We can.
I'm sorry. No, we don't need it. Okay. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Grand Agreement Approval Community Foundation Trails Strategy and Current Conditions Analysis.
This time, I'd move to approve the Community Foundation Grant for Trail Strategy and Current Conditions Analysis in the amount of $24,453.
Support. Discussion? Dave, I think this goes to what you were asking earlier. This is part of the trails piece.
I'm sorry.
This is part of the trails piece to study it. Okay. Roll call.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomian?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Graytop?
Yes. Item O, Recommendation for No Smoking in County Parks.
I make a motion to approve the request to prohibit smoking in all county parks.
Support. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item P, Resolution 1820, Requesting Lighthouse Beach as the Official End to the Great Lake to Lake Trail Route 1.
This time, I'd move to adopt Resolution 18-20, requesting the designation of Lighthouse Beach to the end of the Great Lake to Lake Trail Route 1.
Support. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion? Opposed? Motion carries. Q, Survey and Rebonementation Grant 2019.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the 2019 Survey and Rebonementation Grant Agreement in the amount of $90,221.
Support.
Motion to support? Roll call.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomian?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Graytop?
Yes. Item R, Contract Approval Request, Kevin's Lawn Care and Snow Removal.
Mr. Chairman, this time, I would move to approve the agreement with Kevin's Lawn Care and Snow Removal.
Support. Motion?
Should I finish?
Supported. Discussion?
For $181,016, in case anybody was wondering.
Did he cut you off?
He did. I'll get even later, don't worry.
Make a note.
Out of order.
Sergeant at Arms should be here to dress him.
I'm the sergeant at arms today.
Who supported, who supported that? I'm sorry.
I did.
Okay.
I interrupted you.
Interrupted me and supported me.
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomian?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Graytop?
Yes.
Item S, the Friend of Court Manning Table Request.
I make a motion to approve the revisions to the Friend of Court Manning Table, reclassifying as a mediator special assistant position to an attorney and to add a part-time mediator special assistant position.
Support. Motion to support. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Item T, Health Department Manning Table Revision.
This time, I'd like to move to approve the revision to the Health Department Manning Table, reclassifying an account clerk 3 position to a billing and support coordinator.
Support. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item U, Substance Use Disorder Program Agreement with K W B Strategies.
I move to approve the agreement with K W B Strategies for Substance Use Disorder Program Services in the amount of $10,000 for a term of October 1st, 2018 through September 30th, 2019.
Support.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Item V, which is Resolution 1822, County Winter Tax Levy.
This time, I move to adopt Resolution 18-22, imposing the 2018 property tax levy.
Support. Motion to support. Discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Tomian? Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Graytop?
Yes. Item W, Resolution 1823, Apportioning Taxes for 2018.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to adopt Resolution 18-23, appropriating taxes for 2018.
Support.
Okay, motion to support. Discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomian?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn? Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Graytop.
Yes. All right, item 12, Administrator's Report. Ms. Hefty?
Okay. Our IT department and Sheriff's Department are doing a pilot project with FirstNet, which is a public safety-only broadband network. They are going to test several devices to see if that gives them better coverage in other areas. This has to do with their cellphone and their in-car computers, but this network is dedicated only to public safety, first responders. It's supposed to have better coverage, and they should have better penetration inside buildings, so we are testing that right now. Next month, your budget will be presented, or the general fund budget will be presented on your committee meeting. We currently have the public hearing scheduled for November 8th regarding the budget, and then if the board chooses, you can adopt at that time or sometime in December. We are putting the final touches on our medical examiner's build proposal. We have evaluated several sites off-site, as well as staying where we are at McLaren. At this time, it looks like it will be the best and most cost-effective option to build out, expand, and stay at McLaren. We are just waiting to hear back from the hospital to get final approval on our proposed